Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order for the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Crescent City. Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Dooley.
Here.
Councilmember Tinkler.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Here.
Mayor Altman.
Here. Will everyone please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please let the record reflect that Councilmember Greenell is here. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start this evening with our ceremonial items. We have two new police recruits. We're gonna be introduced to them, Colton Maxwell and Caleb Nadelborg.
You're the mayor, city council. Yeah, so we had a good process. We did lose a couple officers this past year, went over to our allied agency, the sheriff's office. So we started it out, had a lot of good interviews, and these two are the ones that went to the top of the list. They've passed background checks, all the testing and everything. They're on track to go the second week of June to the academy. It's been extended a little bit, so now it's a thirty-week academy. So we'll get them back at the end of December. They've been assigned to Sergeant Lopez again. He's done a great job with the past several recruits that we've sent down there in the academy, so we'll keep tabs on them, anything they need help-wise and everything. And it's been great to have them on already for a couple of weeks. Getting them spooled up, they've actually helped out on one of our search warrants recently too, so they're seeing how things are going, just being scribed, stuff like that. But it's just been really great and seeing their motivation going forward. And again, this is a direct thing from Measure S going forward, helping with the costs and running the contract. So just very thankful for everything and the support from you guys and also Measure S and everything going forward to it. So I'll introduce Caleb Nadelborg is on this end, and then this is Colton Maxwell. So if you guys wanna say anything or?
Yeah, just super grateful for Measure S. Super grateful for Chief Griffin for giving me this opportunity and look forward to serving the community.
Just wanna thank you guys for Measure S and just the amazing opportunity that both of us have been given. But I just strive and strive to just grow and to learn from all you guys, all the amazing officers that we're able to work with. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck at the academy. That'd be a nice Christmas present, right?
I do wanna add that Mr. Nadelborg's been in our, before in the city, he was an employee at the pool. He's also part of our explorer program from several years ago. So it's good to see that program going forward and people coming back being officers.
Oh, good sticking with it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is new employee introduction, Jason Dubois and Damian Camper.
All right, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. Director Jaeger is a little under the weather this meeting, so he will not be be with us, but it's my pleasure to to help introduce a promotion within our, within our ranks. And so we have Mr. Jason Dubois with us. Mr. Dubois is has been part of our Public Works Department for a little over a year now and has progressed rapidly. Before that, he was, I believe, born and raised here, is that correct? In in Delnor County. Spent twenty-plus years in the military and then decided to come back home and and be back with family and wanted to join the city organization. And so I had the pleasure of being part of his interview process. He was with the EMOT Division, the Electrical Mechanical Operations Technician Division. And then now is making a switch over to the Public Works side of things, or the more the street side of the of the Public Works House. And he will be our now senior Public Works Maintenance Worser. The the former employee that had that was Kim Smith. You are mostly familiar with Kim, his work and how important that position is to the Public Works Department. Mr. Dubois will be working directly underneath Wade Mays, who was also recently promoted to the to the Public Works Maintenance Manager, key positions for our Public Works crew, key positions for our community. And I, for one, am just very thankful to have Mr. Dubois as part of that team, and he'll be the ones in the middle of the night responding to those emergencies, keeping our community safe, keeping the water running and keeping the the sewers flowing. And so with that, I'd like to give Jason a few minutes to address the council, but Jason, really pleased that you'll be in this critical position for us.
Like Eric said, I served my country and came back home and kinda didn't have a place. And thank you to Mr. Weir and and your guys' opportunity. I get an opportunity to continue to serve and the team is great. I'm extremely grateful that team has been put together and excited to learn and go forward. And I'm gonna stick around and even listen to all the new projects coming up. I'm that excited. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Then the other gentleman that was on the agenda tonight, unfortunately, he could not be with us. He had he had some other duties, dad duties, that that took precedence with some late arrangements. And so unfortunately, he couldn't be here, but he is also a promotion from within. So Damian Camper is his name. He's been a mechanic with us for the last couple of years, and he is actually switching and will become an EMOT. So Jason leaves the the EMOT Division within Public Works. We have Damian Camper that is gonna be taking that spot. And we'll be recruiting for a new mechanic position, but Damian is also obviously very mechanically inclined. Being a mechanic, and that's what it takes on the EMOT side of things. And so again, another critical position, responding to those community emergencies, making sure that the key infrastructure is maintained. And so we're excited to have Damian in that position. And and Jason is his as we as we look towards the future and making sure we can keep doing what we're doing.
Excellent. Filling those vacancies. And yeah, family does have. We understand that. Okay, moving on to reports and presentations, we have, I believe, is that on Zoom? We have the Delnor Humboldt Film Commission Report.
That is correct. Let me, let me see. Yeah, so let me promoter to a panelist real quick and then. Yes, we have, we have Cassandra, who is the Humboldt Delnor Film Commissioner. Cassandra, are you, can you hear us all right?
Yes, I can.
All right, awesome. Well, the the floor is yours.
Wonderful. Thank you for having me. Really greatly appreciate it. I believe Taylor has my presentation to pull up, if you would. So just to remind you, the Film Commission is the liaison between productions and the area we represent. And we, you know, help, help with marketing to the film world in regards to bringing them here and telling them what we have, as well as where the boots on the ground, and then we focus on film tourism. So are are you guys playing the PowerPoint on your end?
We will be momentarily.
Okay, just double checking. Wow, that was stalling.
Sandra, I don't know if you have this in your PowerPoint, but are you also gonna talk about Forest Moon if we wanna?
Of course. Yes, definitely, for sure. Yeah, and that's part of the film tourism, right? You know, so it used to be our job was really just about helping the productions come. And then with film tourism really taking off in the past five to ten years, you know, worldwide, we've really added some different components, and one of them being the Forest Moon Festival. It really, it makes sense, you know, since we have something that's one of the biggest series out there as far as films go, that we would get to enjoy something like this, you know, so.
Absolutely. And while he's, while Mr. Patch is bringing that up, I'm getting the, getting the head shake, no and yes, all at the same time. Exactly. Thirty seconds.
Okay, great. I'll keep, I'll keep stalling. Yeah, you know, so I, yeah, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, you know, where we were. If anybody was at the Economic Summit, you know, a very similar presentation kind of just explains what we've been doing, where we're going. Here we go, yay. So yeah, like I mentioned, that what we are, you know, is the the liaison between productions, the area we represent, and we focus on film tourism. And this year, we really decided that we were gonna focus more on tourism than before. We had a whole bunch of projects that kind of popped up in regards to last year that we really kind of exploded with. So I'll be talking about those, but production itself is tourism too. It stimulates the economy with outside dollars. They need accommodations and food when they come to the area. They have a bunch of film-related needs like gas and vendors. And then they go out afterwards, you know, they have the days off and they usually don't get dinner on set. So there's a lot of adjacent when a production comes from out of the area, even though it's an industry. It's a temporary, you know, economic stimulus. The fan tourism portion, we have launched a few different programs, which I'll talk more about, but we have an app now for film, all things film. We have a museum of cinema, which we highlight Crescent City Delnor a lot in. They're in every exhibit that we've done so far in the past year and a half. The the museum itself is in Eureka, but we promote equally, you know, the whole area, because touristy it is one big Redwood area. And then we have the map of the movies, which we've been doing for, gosh, I wanna say over twelve years now, and then the Forest Moon Festival. Let's look at this next. So this is a case study. Granted, this movie is older, but it really just shows you what happens when a production comes to the area. And this one was obviously a big one. It was the number one downloaded movie for Netflix for about a year and a half. And it was really exciting, you know, to have something that stellar. Well, I was, I was able to show one photo to get this movie, and that was the the Fork of the Smith River. They had asked me, don't you have a stellar river with a fork in it? And I giggled and just sent this photo, and they said, we'll be there in a week. So it was pretty exciting. So but it kind of shows you like when they do come, and and they came in January, February, which we know is the you know, lowest end for hotels and restaurants. It's a hard time. Everyone's, you know, had the holidays and things. And so the money hits different than when they come in July, when there's already, you know, a height of tourism. So you can see that they spent, you know, different things like $500,000 on hotel, you know, in that timeframe. You know, location fees were $80,000, you know, rentals, all the different things that they spent. And it totaled $900,000 dollars, direct dollars. So for every dollar they spend, it really feels more like $3, $2.95. And that is again, because of all the other spending they do outside of the actual direct filming. And then the money stimulating the economy up to three times before it leaves. And again, this is outside dollars coming in doing this. So it can be a pretty big impact. Next slide, please. When when productions come, we get a lot of PR, you know, outside PR. And what's great about this is it does two things, that it talks to the audience of other filmmakers, might make them interested in it. And then it also lets tourists know where these productions were, and people definitely are excited to go to their favorite movie. We get people still for, you know, things that you would never think of, like Halloween Three filmed down on Lolita in Humboldt County, and people still come for Halloween Three. You know, things like that. ET for you guys, you know, people that that I would understand more, but you know, so you just never know. Even if a movie's been out for a while, what people are gonna wanna see, what they, what it resonates with. Next slide, please. And when something like this, that big comes, we do an award show annually that is for the California locations on award show, and it it acknowledges when productions film in California. And so this particular movie did win an award for best location manager for filming in California for indie feature film. And as you could see, there's a picture of, you know, Delnor, and it was pretty amazing that that they won, because it's in a room full of 500 other location managers and studios. So it continues, it's the gift that keeps giving. So, you know, we're really excited when these kind of moments happen, because it's basically like free marketing at that point. Next slide. And so one of the things that's really important to know, though, is in the past year and a half, we've had a slowdown. So you know, it can, it can be difficult to get productions to wanna film far north and rural areas. They have to need that location. They have to want that location. They have to be able to sign off with their producers nowadays. You need tax incentive programs, at least, you know, there's 120 around the world. And those are country or statewide ones. And a lot of them now have passed Californias. They're more competitive than what we can offer. Until now, the newest program that we're hoping will get passed here and start July first, and hopefully doesn't, doesn't have to wait another six months. But the current program is not competitive in California. And unfortunately, we we keep getting competitive behind the times. And so what was catching up now has put us behind with a bunch of other programs. And so what we're having experiencing since the strike of twenty-three is now a slowdown of filming in California. It's, it's not just studio and feature films, but commercials as well, and everything's down about 50%. Because of that, I am part of a group, Flix Film Liaisons in California. And we did go to the Capitol back in April, and we spent a week there lobbying and supporting the two bills that would help change this and get us a little closer to being able to be competitive. Sure, we still get people interested. People still wanna come and maybe shoot, you know, their commercials and things, but it's been really, really slow. Really, really, a lot smaller productions. And that's made it, you know, you know, it's always scary, you know, because then we're losing that revenue that we kind of grown to count on, you know, of having productions into the area. So we did do our part back in April, and that was wonderful. And what are we doing locally? Well, one of the things that we are trying to do now is as we wait for what the state's about to do, we are working on Delnor as well as Crescent City. Eric's been fantastic about helping me try to draft, you know, an incentive package or discuss brainstorm, you know, workshop with, you know, being creative with what we can do. How could you guys, you know, feel that you could support production but not feel that you're, you know, having to give away the moon, you know? So and we have to figure out what are those requirements? What does that look like? And and how does that entice? Maybe it won't entice a studio, but it might entice some of the smaller ones that kind of become the bread and butter. When you add them up, it's, you know, beneficial to the community. And so we're working on on finalizing this incentive program, marketing the incentives, and of course, then we would track its success. One of the other things that we're hoping that will also bring in more production, especially if California does, you know, is able to get this new incentive pa- package passed, which I believe it will, very hopeful. Is that we wanna be able to have some type of soundstage, which is the only way we're really ever gonna get an episodic television show. You might know of the Virgin River TV show that claims to be filming, you know, in the Redwood region, but is really filming in Canada because of the incentive. We've had a few other shows over the past fifteen years that have done that as well. And part of the problem is we don't have a soundstage for, you know, either really delicate scenes, like if you wanted to film the top of a redwood, you're not gonna put an actor way up there. You're gonna build that top in a soundstage. Or if it really, if it's raining and you need to still keep filming, but you can't film outside, then they're gonna wanna go into a soundstage or control sound. All the different things. So right now, we're in talks with Cal Poly Humboldt, and this would benefit, again, you know, granted, yes, that would be in Arcata. But it would benefit you greatly, because again, productions don't see borders, and to them, it's all one big Redwood region. And if they were filming throughout the area, you know, or specifically only like in Crescent City and Delnor, they still would be excited. It would hold them longer. And they might do more if they knew there was a soundstage in in the nearby vicinity. So we're really excited about the opportunity that the talks that we're having with Cal Poly Humboldt. Some of the other things we did this year to kind of, like I said, play catch up, because we've really kind of added a lot of programs, you know, we enhanced our website, kind of cleaned up our marketing, our branding. And I became vice president of Flix, that's the Film Liaisons in California statewide. I was former on the board for, I believe it was six years, and was board president. And then I turned off. And then they asked me to come back on, and now I've been asked, was asked to be vice president. So this year, I'm, I'm sitting vice president. So again, anytime I do speeches or go anywhere or help put on award shows, or you can see the bottom pictures at Netflix or whatever, I'm representing the area again as vice president. So it, you know, it's an extra thing I have to do my day job, but it also is again, free marketing. You can't get that kind of you know, one-on-one hand conversations with people with with this title is really helpful. So again, you know, I mentioned, you know, film tourism has really exploded in, you know, I think there's a couple of different things that have made that happen. And one of them is being that, you know, we have social media and people share things. But they've done, you know, since 2023, they've said it's really been very popular. Ninety-six percent of Americans have visited a place associated with their favorite TV show or movie at least once in their lifetime. And that's huge. We do know that, you know, that there's some pretty big locations from some big films that people like to go to, and one of them being, you know, anything related to do with Star Wars. So we have done a lot of research. I won't bore you with all of this, but we've done a lot of research, kind of looking at, you know, is this real? Is it gonna, you know, is it staying? And we've just seen it how it's, it's built up to this place now where, yes, you know, people wanna be able to travel and go see the location that meant something to them. So on average, we found that there's an increase of tourism revenue, about 31% for a film that can increase that. Neighborhoods get renewed as a result of tur- tourism. That there's an important positive economic and that it leads to quality of life when this happens. You get the not only the tourist who comes here and they're excited because of something that, you know, was really meaningful to them. But also you then have the locals who are very proud to have something like that in and to be able to celebrate and, and, you know, unite over. They know that it, you know, film tourism can trigger a unique emotional reaction, and it can shape the values and lifestyles of the people that are living there. And so it's well beyond the dollars, you know, what we've experienced that just with the few years that we've been throwing the festival. I mean, the smile on people's faces, the comments, did you bring us Disneyland? And a lot of the people too, you know, in the Redwood region can't afford to go. I lived fifteen minutes from Disneyland. I would go in high school for one ride, you know? I heard the fireworks, you know, every night. It, it, so for me, it was just something that I always knew, but to know people here now that said, oh, I don't, I don't know if I'll ever get to go. It, it, it's pretty amazing to be able to bring a little bit of this kind of joy to them. Some of the other things that are really in vogue in regards to supporting the film tourism aspect is, you know, Airbnb has started to tailor film tours or their locations, you know, there's, as you can see, one of the pictures there is, you know, some type of sci-fi bed there. And, you know, there's, so we're in competition. It's not just here. It's around the world now that people are taking advantage of the fact that they've had something like that. And it's some type of important, significant film production that that people would be interested in seeing. And they're doing it as, going as far as decorating their Airbnbs. So, you know, I don't know. Crescent City, you might wanna, might wanna encourage your locals to decorate a little Star Wars-ish, right? Another example of this is Twilight, you know, again, we kind of researched and looked at, you know, who else has done this, you know, in the States, you know, and something comparable to us. And Twilight didn't even film here, but it says that it filmed there. That's the where the story is, is set to be is Forks Washington. And they did an amazing job at at highlighting all this. And so as you can see, their, their tourism increased by 3,400 in three years just by throwing a Twilight Festival. So, so, you know, not everyone's a Star Wars fan, but we could be Twilight. Be happy that we have that one. So yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing what they've done. So again, fan tourism, some of the ways that we're doing it is we do have the app. It's been downloaded over 1,500 times. It does feature our map, so it's a self-guided tour that we've had around for about 12 years now. The app or the map has been, you know, I say over to the right, you could see viewed, printed, or downloaded over 350,000 times. So it's very popular. A lot of museums, chambers, the state parks have said, you know, they run out of it all the time. And you can do it by yourself. So it was really popular during COVID because of that. People, and and a lot of it was outside. So it's, it's something that can be done, you know, when the tourist wants to do it versus waiting for someplace to open. The other part that we have on the app is we feature our museum as well as the Forest Moon Festival on there. And so they can find out what is the latest exhibit, and they can also use the Forest Moon Festival portion of the app to totally meet all their film tourism needs for the weekend of the festival. We have the museum, like I said, we've had over 3,300 people in limited hours in the past, you know, eighteen months come. Over 24 states and four countries, they've been, you know, in the area. So it's, it's been pretty exciting. And we just opened up the the Forest Moon exhibit, which is fantastic and feature both counties and and the contribution to the, the Star Wars Return of the Jedi film sites. And if you hear purring, that's my cat. He's sitting right next to the laptop and won't go away. So the Forest Moon Festival, yay. You know, we, when we first launched it in 2023, we, you know, first of all, we were, we thought of this like 12 years ago. We started getting ready to research it and start having meetings in 2019, and then the pandemic happened. So when we came out of it in 2022, we threw a little May 4th event, you know, at a park and went, wow, okay, that was popular. So then we decided to launch in 2023 the festival. We were in the New York Times before we even threw the festival, which was amazing. And ARP sent a photojournalist up, and, you know, there was a lot of activity that for that year. It was the fortieth anniversary for Return of the Jedi, so it made sense. Last year was pretty significantly strong and was amazing. And you guys have done a lot to help us with this, you know, Beachfront has been amazing. Chief Griffin, you know, the city has been amazing, and city manager Eric, you know, all of you, all of your staff, the volunteers, it's just amazing how you contribute and and help out with this. And I think that the community really seems to have embraced it and showed up for it as well. So it, we were excited to then go into 2025, but we realized that we probably needed to step it up a little bit. So this year, we're excited. We've been on several apps already. People are promoting us at a different level. Star Wars fans are big into apps. And we happen to, I mean, not apps, sorry, podcasts. And we happen to have the biggest, what what is considered the number one Star Wars podcast, Rebel Force Radio, who will be attending the weekend and including Beachfront on that Friday kickoff. We're very excited about it. They have over 100,000 followers. Again, considered the biggest Star Wars in the world podcast, little nerve, you know, makes us a little nervous, but we're super excited because they've already been promoting it. They're attending. They're gonna be recording and doing interviews and then putting that out there, a whole episode on this. So has the potential to really, really push us out farther than than what we've been doing annually. This could could really speed things up as far as more tourists from other areas around the world coming to this event. And we also, after last year, when we were exhausted and everybody was taking some days off, I turned on the television, what should be on right after throwing the festival, but the movie Fanboys, which is a, you know, it's a, it's a kind of a mock movie of some super fans of Star Wars who decide to go on a road trip, and they are gonna go break into George Lucas's ranch. And, you know, it has Seth Rogen and, you know, Kristen Bell, and of course, Carrie Fisher, the the late Carrie Fisher, who played Leia. So she's in it. They do a little Star Trek nod as well in there. It's pretty funny. And so very fun movie for people who are into Star Wars movies. They tend to love Fanboys, the movie. So we will be bringing up the director actually for the film. So Kyle Newman is the director. He has directed several movies, documentaries. He's done some music videos like Taylor Swift. And he's actually good friends with the podcast. So they're going to be going around touring together for the weekend. And he will be also at Beachfront as well as part of the podcast and interviews and and making an appearance there before the, after the family part of Crescent City and before the film actually takes place. This, this will be the segment in between those two things. And so, yeah, that's what we do. We're two and a half staff and independent contractors, volunteers, and we have board of directors. We're a nonprofit. We are required to be a free service to all productions. And yeah, that's, that's We are required to be a free service to all productions and, um, yeah, that's that's us.
Well, thank you very much for that, uh, report.
Yeah, certainly appreciate it, Cassandra and everything that, uh, you guys have been working with us on lots of, uh, planning going into this year's Forest Moon Festival to try to, you know, make that even bigger and and better. As well as, like she mentioned, how can we as a city of Crescent City work to 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 promote and hopefully attract even more films into the area? The economic development potential here is just at the the tip of the iceberg that we think. I mean, we have an absolutely, obviously amazing community, a unique downtown that, you know, that has some opportunities that a lot of people see, but certainly a uniqueness that Cassandra has has witnessed with a type of movie that that might attract, and then also just our natural resources, you know, the redwoods, the ocean, all those different things. And so as city staff and Chief Griffin has done an amazing job as well, working with her in the past to try to, uh, try to do what we can to attract. But that is something that will come back to the council is what sort of package could we offer? Are there different things that we can do so that we just eliminate any barriers that might be there?
I guess that was a question I had, um, and I realize we have a very full agenda, but so maybe I can do this through email with Cassandra or something. I had, I was very interested in the process of developing, um, incentives we can offer, we can create. And, um, you know, what, I have no idea what those are, are what you're thinking of, but, um, I guess what I was also looking at is what do you think we lack? What what what's an area we could work on improving? And I know that could probably be a two hour discussions, but if you could do it briefly, that'd be interesting to me.
Yeah, you know, I think you guys do things really well. I think one of the things that you already do, we could just promote better, you know, is the fact that you have low or we maybe we can make no, um, you know, film permit fees. So that would be one of the things is to be able to say, hey, one of the incentives for everyone is no, no film, film permit fees, application fees. Um, there's other things that you could do, like, you know, any type of contribution as far as if there's road, uh, you know, the signs or cones or barricades, any of those kind of things that if you, the city already owns, those are really great items to say, hey, we can offer that free so that they don't have to rent that, you know, for any of like the car commercials or if someone wants to do a little scene, you know, by Beachfront, they need to close part of the road down and that would be a requirement. Um, so there's, there's little things that we could do that could make or break, uh, you know, these productions that they're going to say, oh, wow, we get the stellar area and you're gonna, we're gonna eliminate some of those fees, you know, that we're gonna push us over the edge of not being able to travel there. So those are the kind of things that we're looking at right now. Um, you know, there's other ones that you can do. It's, it goes from everything from like really soft incentives to bigger ones, like if they spend so much money and stay in hotels and hire and do all these things, they can actually even get a credit or rebate, you know, and that that becomes a whole bigger process to track and monitor. Um, I would suggest that we start with the softer ones so that we just see how that how that works and then go from there.
The other thing that we've been talking to Cassandra about Bridget Lacy's taking the lead on this is making sure that she has a library of all of the really great sites. And as she mentioned, we got Bird Box here was one photo of the forks of the Smith. Right? There are other sites like that and just making sure that she has those photos at her fingertips. I mean, there's and nobody knows this area like what we do or like the locals. And so, you know, having those those certain, you know, aspects of the community right there, then understanding what it would take to actually shoot a film in that location. What are some of the amenities? How can we support a filmmaker that might want to come and actually?
Yeah, Eric's nailed that. Um, I think, you know, to answer your question also of like, what are you lacking? Well, what I probably lacking as your representative is probably, you know, better, more photos, knowing the locations better. And and it, and, you know, representing both counties, even the county that I live in, it's, you know, these areas are so large and there's so much to it, you know, I'll never know all of it, especially if I'm, you know, answering the phone, I can't be out there always learning all these locations. So I do rely on, um, the help, you know, of knowing what what is a stellar location, you know, not only visually, but does it have the the aspects as Eric, uh, you know, uh, mentioned that it has to have the, um, amenities that would be necessary.
Bless all the time dealing with that cat.
I know, I'm so sorry.
Does anyone else have anything for Cassandra?
Oh, I just, I'd like to thank Cassandra for all her hard work, um, with, uh, getting, uh, film, uh, film people to come up here and film and, um, with the Forest Moon Festival. I'm looking forward to it. This is a Councilman Jason Greeno, by the way. Um, I'm looking forward to Rebel Force Radio to come into town, uh, and, uh, having a little spot on their show. I volunteered to do that, so it's, I think it's going to be a great year. I know the last two years have been, uh, awesome. And, uh, I look forward to having this be, uh, a shoulder season um, event hopefully into the future. And I know that in the past it's been very good and hopefully we can put our best foot forward this year as well.
Did somebody have to twist your arm to do that?
Well, uh, my, my wife has been listening to, uh, Rebel Force Radio for, I think, over ten years, so, yeah. She's real excited that they're coming. Uh, she's a big fan of Kyle Newman as well and his work, so, yeah, we're, we're very excited about this.
Anybody else? Okay, Cassandra, thank you so much for your port and, uh, and I was only teasing. I just happen to be the funniest mayor.
Well, he was making a bunch of noise right when he did that, so I was concerned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized item. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name, city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Any public comment, Dean?
Still here. Sam Straight, I live in the county. I'm a little disappointed with, uh, the response we got from the council and the, uh, city manager last meeting when you, uh, punted on when we asked how far the, uh, city was going to take, uh, hiring, uh, people for the fire department and I had to go spend six hours at a budget hearing to, uh, learn that, uh, that the Crescent City Fire Chief is, uh, asking you to, uh, consider hiring a lieutenant to, uh, be on the city fire staff. We asked you how far the, uh, city was willing to take, uh, converting the, uh, fire department from all volunteer to a professional station and, uh, where the money was going to come from if you elected to take that path and in the course of the budget hearing, it was pretty clear that, uh, there was some interest in, uh, a hired fire department, which, uh, I don't see as, uh, a feasible way to go. The other thing that I, uh, was curious about is that, uh, a couple of years ago, I, uh, attended a meeting at the Board of Supervisors and it was a report on the fifth, uh, 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 I don't know, state of of housing in California. I don't remember exactly what they called it. And, uh, they determined that Crescent City and the county needed to come up with six hundred new residences over the next few years and that, uh, some of them would have to be a certain amount would have to be low income. I was curious about that report as they also said that there were twelve hundred vacant residences in Del Norte County, which I'm scratching my, wondering where that came from because all of the recent efforts, at least from the city and the county, have been to develop, uh, um, apartment complexes and I believe you're talking about a hundred and a near, near two hundred near, uh, new residents for, uh, moderate to low income housing in that city. And if, uh, I believe the city manager referenced, uh, sixty seven hundred for the, uh, the city and and the current estimates for the city are about fifty six hundred. So you've lost eleven hundred residents over the course of the last three years. And the county has had a similar decline in in, uh, residents. I'm wondering why. Now there's this big push for housing when we appear to be losing residents in a rather significant pace. Uh, I don't expect an answer, but, uh, I I wanted you to be aware of that, at least, uh, from the standpoint of what's going on in the county. We're not growing, we're declining in population. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Straight. Any further public comment?
Good evening, council members. My name is Ima Han. I am a program director with the Del Norte and Tribulance Community Food Council and Crescent City resident. I came tonight to invite you to our grand opening and celebration of the farmer's market. I wanted to start with some gratitude and thanking you all for getting us to our new location across from the post office in the old Bank of America parking lot on H Street and Second. And we are having a ribbon cutting ceremony and I thought it would be delightful to have you all, um, be in attendance if you're available, um, to celebrate this wonderful community event and, um, get the word out about the new location as well for our farmer's market. I have some flyers if that would be easy to share with you all. Um, I don't know the protocol for that. And it's, the first market is actually just a little over two weeks away on June fourth and the ribbon cutting will be at nine AM. And then we'll have live music that day. We're having some tastings, so we'll have tastings of local food. And we're really just hoping to launch the new market location and have a great event for the community.
Thank you so much for the invitation. I hope it's a huge success at the new location. Um, I, I, I did email you back. I, I won't be able to make it. Uh, I'll be in Florida.
Yes, I saw that.
But I did pass the information on to council.
Great.
Hopefully the public hears and everyone rushes out.
I hope so. All right. And I wanted to extend thanks as well to the city for working on the parking lot and making it look nice, fixing the building. It's looking really great. So thank you.
Oh, that's great to hear. Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, any further public comment? Okay, not seeing any further public comment. We're going to move on to consent calendar. Now, the consent calendar contains items deemed to be non-controversial and routine in nature. All items on the consent calendar will be considered as a block and voted upon in one vote unless a member of the council pulls an item from the consent or individual consideration. Now I do believe we want to pull item four this evening because I do see PJ in attendance. So we're going to pull number four, but, um, uh, item number one, let me go over these is warrants claim list. Item number two is council meeting minutes. Item number three is payroll report. Uh, item four is city Crescent City Measure S Oversight Committee Appointment. Uh, number five is list of proposed local street projects for the Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen SB one. Is is that something we're gonna keep on the consent calendar?
We would actually like you to pull that as well and remove that from this agenda.
It's going to be removed.
That's what, that's what staff's request is. There's a couple of nuances with projects that are continuing versus new projects. And so we want to make sure that we have the resolution right. That'll be brought back to the council at our next.
Okay, note to council, number five is removed. Postponed. Number six, Beachfront Park Phase One A Notice of Completion. Number seven, Budget Adjustment for Electricity. Number eight, Task Order Amendment for Fiscal Year Twenty Four, Twenty Five, SHN Planning Services.
I'll make the motion that we approve, uh, consent calendar items one, two, three, six, seven, and eight.
We have a motion? Second. Third, pull the vote. Oh, any public comment? Oh, wait, oh, here comes Mr. Straight.
You need to know who I am again.
You can keep saying who you are if you want.
Sam Straight, I live in the county. Uh, I I see that, uh, at least you have a, a fairly condensed, uh, consent calendar and, uh, you pulled the two items that, uh, perhaps, uh, should have been pulled initially. And one would hope that, uh, you can trim the consent calendar down even further in future meetings because you never know when an item may not appear controversial and yet it is. And it often produces some relatively healthy discussions about, uh, various items on the consent agenda that, uh, the five of you and the staff perhaps, uh, are not even considering as being, uh, important to the discussion. So, uh, as I say, uh, the, uh, county hasn't learned their lesson, but, uh, I'm hoping that the city will indeed, uh, make sure that the public has the opportunity more than a simple three minute conversation about, uh, in this case, uh, eight items, uh, less, uh, number five and four. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, consideration for, uh, what this represents. It, uh, is after all city business and whether it's controversial or not, it's important for the public to at least, uh, be able to have a say about, uh, various items when often it takes three minutes to consider, uh, a singular item in a public comment and, uh, it would be virtually impossible to, uh, address more than one of the, uh, si- uh, eight or seven remaining items on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's see, any other public comment? Hey, wait just one second. Third, now what were we gonna do with number three?
Number two.
Was it two? Sorry.
I just wanted to mention for the record that, um, I was not here, did not attend the last council meeting, although I've carefully read the the meeting minutes and all of the items have carefully read on this consent calendar. So I'd like to continue to be able to vote overall for the consent calendar, but want it noted that I abstain from knowing whether the meeting minutes are correct or not since I
So did you say that you're abstaining from the minutes?
Not from the vote. I just wanted to note that I don't have any comments on the meeting minutes since I wouldn't know.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dooley?
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes. Okay, now that we're past all the confusion there. Let's, um, uh, number four, city of Crescent City Measure S Oversight Committee Appointment. And, uh, I guess we're going to confirm my appointment of PJ Eslin to the city of Crescent City Measure S Oversight Committee. Term ending May two thousand twenty seven. And I see you're here tonight. Would you like to come up and say something? It's not a requirement. So, okay, so she's going to be our newest member on the Measure S Committee. Thank you.
All right. And then I'm assuming we need a motion for removing number five?
Uh, Dewey?
Well, we need a motion on number four since it was pulled from the
Oh, yeah, yeah, that too.
Any public comment first? Hey, we need a motion for number four.
I'll make the motion to approve item number four on the consent calendar.
I second.
Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Dooley?
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes.
And number five couldn't be removed? And number five couldn't be removed just with consensus of the council. And we'll bring it back in June.
Okay, any objection to the removal of five? Okay, so move. Okay. Moving on to new business for the evening, number nine, agreement for design of the gateway monuments, and we are about to hear a staff report.
All right, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. So Tonight is another step forward in regard to the Front Street project and the overall Gateway monuments of the of the city, or at least looking for direction from the council on this. Just to sort of go back and and review a little bit. This project has has been in the works for decades, quite frankly, and started out with just a an overall theme. A front street where the redwoods meet the sea was the overall theme back when we did this master plan back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven ish. As as the different parts have have come to fruition. It didn't come together all in one fail swoop as we would have loved to seen. We would love to have just landed a thirty million dollar grant and be able to do the entire street all at once and beachfront park and have all the gateways figured out. And while we're talking about it, let's go ahead and throw in another Few million and let's get downtown. And so all of this vision all comes together all at once. Well, that is obviously not the reality that that we've been living with for the last decades and certainly appreciate the community's patience as as we've had the different pieces come together. And then You know, every year there's more construction on Front Street, but every year we have been getting closer. So it's come from just this dream of a concept to actually seeing pieces of that reality Be there present, and we're not dodging as many potholes, just the really the last two blocks is what we have left at this point. So that was the first phase. This was the second phase of the meander. This was the last phase that was that was built just this last summer season. Taking us to to Play Street and then leaving basically this this section left. So staff has been working very hard with our consultant team. Green Works is the landscape architect on this. Stover Engineering is also helping us. This project is actually a combination of two grants and some other funding to bring this To bring this project to life. And so we have our the Clean California Grant with Caltrans. That's what's doing the front of the Colts Center. And then we have the CDBG portion of it, which is redoing the street in Front Street From Play Street down to the highway and then also K Street. What is also involved in this project is major storm drain improvements, water sewer upgrades, as well as the undergrounding of the power lines, which we've also talked about. So lots of different components at work. All of them coming together. As we as we looked at this, part of this is also beautification and thinking about the S curve and how people come into our community. And so we looked at A new welcome to Crescent City sign. We looked at new sort of gateway type of, you know, wayfinding type signs as well. So gateway monuments. And we had these basic designs that that really represented, you know, kind of a coastal theme. We were excited about this and we're moving forward. And then, you know, another piece of this whole vision Came to be, and that was our downtown master plan piece. And so with that, we are under contract with Crandall Rambla and A sub to the Crandall Rambla contract is actually Green Works, a slightly different component of Green Works, but still it's the same landscape architect firm. And when we talked about this piece of it, and really when we started to think about the conjunction of the park, all those different pieces coming together, but not just the park, but the downtown. And then the overall experience as you're coming into town. Basically, I asked him a direct question. I said, what do you think of our, what do you think of our gateway finding, you know, pieces that we have in this? And Dawn Rambla and Gil Williams who are with us tonight and and Dawn was Dawn's pretty frank when it comes to this. They've done a lot of master plans. They've worked with a lot of cities. They've worked on projects like this. And he said that we think that they're okay for what they are. But they're missing a lot of pieces and components. If you're really wanting them to be a driver for economic development and have that sense of connection with the downtown. To do, there's, there's pieces that that you basically didn't think about when you were looking just at this one component. So with Crescent City and, you know, a lot of these projects, we've been working on these for decades. We don't have another bite at this apple. We have this one shot. We have one shot to get it right. And that's what really we're we're here tonight to talk about is trying to get it right, trying to use this money. Is this the perfect timing for this discussion? Quite frankly, no, we are. We are late in the game. But the game is not over. This is the this is the baseball analogy in a channel my inner Dave Yeager, right? This is, this is the ninth inning, and we're not quite out yet. And so it's it's time to move. So we've made some modifications to to our way of thinking and the overall direction. And from an engineering standpoint, from a traffic flow standpoint, there's a lot of components that I think do work a lot better, and I like a lot of their ideas as they're thinking about these new designs. The other big piece that I didn't mention is the fact that there's another four million dollar grant that RCTA landed, and that's for the improvements to the Transit Center. Another vital component of downtown and transportation and how our community is going to function, not just today, but in the future. With that project, there's also a public restroom. So thinking about how all that functions as well is very important to the overall use of this. So this is, this is what we had looked at in the past. Again, these are not the consultants graphic, so I just want to give a disclaimer on that. This is We won't name who actually came up with this, but this is kind of what it would would look like, right? And it's and it would have a certain appeal to it, right? It would be memorable. It would, it would be a portion as you're coming down in. We look at the other, the other piece with the other gateway component, and this would be at K Street, right? It would have this overall archway feel to it. But in talking with Dawn and Gil, and they'll speak to it here in a minute, it was sort of missing that overall piece to it. There were pieces and you'd go underneath an arch. But in their opinion, you really wouldn't go anywhere. And so this is their This is their overall concept. And at this point in time, I'll turn it over to either either Dawn or Gil as this was your idea and And I will let you guys explain it, the type of overall vision That you see as this is sort of the new gateway and some of these components that that we've added are Are medians in through in through this area here, a protected bike lane. As we kind of, we've seen this on Pebble Beach already. There are so many more bike riders and pedestrian users on Pebble Beach. Even before we made those improvements because there there is an acceptable facility where they feel safe. And so you'll notice, you'll notice that piece. And then these these flagpole type signs, which will bring everything together. And with that, I will stop this time and I will turn it over to to Gil or Dawn.
I'll go ahead and start, Eric. Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, perfect. And thank you very much. It's exciting to hear Cassandra's report and Kind of the vision, I think, that folks have for Crescent City. And so I think I'm real excited about the The project and the work that Eric and his team have been doing there and involving us with it. As he mentioned, I think that, you know, the gateway, the previous gateway for, you know, for what it was charged to do was was probably appropriate, but As we look at Crescent City as a whole, I think it's really important that we think holistically about A branding that is exportable throughout the city, not just the beachfront, because while the beachfront is an extraordinary asset. The vision is to create similar energy around downtown and other parts of Of Crescent City. And so I think that we need to think broader about what that brand is and what that vision is. And I, that is one of the the reasons Dawn and I had had looked at this and really thought it important to make a strong statement. And I think beyond beachfront park. And so I did, we were scrambling here at the last minute, Eric. I do, I just sent you some, I don't know if you have access to what I just sent you, but it was some updated graphics and looking at a bigger picture. You had a Graphic there that showed Front Street from a drone shot. Could you go ahead and that one there? This is about half. There's another graphic that we've just produced that is further back Looking at this sequence from Highway one oh one and the S curves. And the main objective with this is to get people off of one oh one into both beachfront district and downtown. And I think that while the the previous designs Created interest, I think we have to be very bold and blatant about that. And Some of the gateways and the monuments, especially at the S curves. We think they need to be very deliberate and very In your face about what we're trying to do. And so Eric, I think that you have some of the gateway monument ideas there at the end of the presentation, I believe.
So I do. So this is, this is that shot on the S curve. So this would actually be, you're on Front Street, you're looking towards The Veterans Monument would be just to the left of this. So that's, that's the highway you're looking at just as you enter the S curve.
And that is, you know, this is from Front Street. Obviously, what we're wanting to capture are the people coming south on one oh one, which is a huge volume Of traffic traveling through Crescent City. This is kind of the last opportunity to capture those those drivers and to get them into into the downtown grid. And starting with Front Street, I think Front Street is an just an incredible introduction To downtown Crescent City. I think that this is something that could be, I think, very, very powerful. And we also Use a very similar gateway like the monument you see there on the opposite side to attract northbound traffic And and get them Thinking about turning left, literally turning left onto Front Street and pulling them into downtown. So I think that it's not just starts with these two monuments, but I want to go back a little bit about the idea of branding and the idea of having A identifiable and an exportable Design and and a materiality that can be taken throughout the city. And this, these, these types of elements, whether they're concrete And wood or Corten steel and, you know, those sorts of elements are very exportable. I think that one of the things that The previous design was very geared toward beachfront park, which I think they did a good job with that. But I think what we need is A a set of tools that we can export throughout the city that will brand Crescent City. And as Eric goes through the, some of the ideas That we noticed Straight away was the absence of redwoods in a lot of the graphics. And so, well, not trying to be very in your face about it. Having subtle hints like what you're seeing on the both sides of this On the vertical, which is an acknowledgement and this, at least a nod to the The redwoods to the sea idea. And so at the bottom of this and in in Association with the landscape and the Corten fence you see there, these are all very beach Esq. Components that we feel like really Strengthened this idea of this gateway. Again, a different material, but I think a lot of these parts are interchangeable. I think that we have, you know, The idea is that we make a strong, strong statement and we have material that can Go other parts of the city. There could be gateways into downtown. Certainly, there need to be monuments on the north side of town as you're coming south on one oh one as you enter Crescent City. And it's, it's a series of Designs that tie the city together. It's not just the beachfront. It's the entire city. So what would be go hand in hand with this is a package And a kit of parts that that could be used throughout the city. One of the ideas about the gateway, the previous gateway located at K Street, I think, and Eric alluded to it, is A gateway needs to literally be that, a gateway. And at K Street, while even from a land Ownership standpoint was a little more difficult. It was way too close to One oh one. Here you can see it. It's the, so K Street is the street in the foreground there. The The idea of going through a gateway is you enter into a new area. If the gateway is located there, you're kind of going through underneath Something and there's just the same on the other side. And so one of the things we really wanted to strengthen was this arrival. And this sense of arrival and celebration that you have. And if you go back to the gateway photos, when you go through the gateway and we're moving it down to the pedestrian mall on the west side of the Transit Center. Is that you go through something substantial. A gateway is literally a door or a portal to, it's kind of I was thinking about the Star Wars analogy, but a portal into another realm. So you go through the the gateway and you arrive in a different area. And I think A gateway like this feels like a gateway. It is a portal. So when you go through it. You are at beachfront and and you really get a sense for that. Located down on K Street, I think it it just didn't quite do the job. I think it was You go through it and then you have the Transit Center on the right. And so there wasn't really a substantial transition going through it. And I think the size of this and the mass of this really signals a gateway. This, I think, really speaks strongly to the transition between Highway one oh one and you're in another area. And as a visitor, I think this is very welcoming. If you go back one slide where you see the procession of the of the banners, this one Is, I think that these banners have a ton of potential to Brand Front Street, they could brand festivals, they can brand times, you know, things throughout the year. These can be interchangeable. They can have series of icons on them that lets you know what area of the city you're in at a given time. Which I think is important. I think that it's, you know, when you're at the beachfront, you you go through this, you, you know, the Redwood Center is on your right, on your left, I'm sorry. And then The Transit Center, which is going to be enhanced, brand new Transit Center is on your right. So I think there's a Activation component to this. You're getting people on the streets. You're making better sidewalks, better bike paths. You've got landscape on something that was previously very car centric. It was, it was almost exclusively car centric. These parking spaces that you saw On the left Literally backed into Front Street. So we felt that separating those, putting the bike lane, switching it out of the street Of over to the, go back to that previous slide, that one, right? Or To be or what, go back two slides. Well, you can see it here. You can see that one. This one here, you can see that separating the bike thing, getting the bikes out of traffic and making it very Very appealing to bicyclist. I think people getting around from beachfront park into downtown Really focusing on pedestrians and bikes, getting people to park their cars, getting feet on the ground, walking into downtown. There's a The other nice thing about this location for the gateway is the perpendicular connection From Play Street, from the Redwood Center Across front and then north on the pedestrian mall there On the west side of the Transit Center into downtown, I think is a really important connection because if people drive into the city and Need directions and they go to the Redwood Center And they park, it would be great to get them walking and drag, you know, guiding them across Front Street into downtown would be a vital Part of that. I want to give Dawn a chance. If Dawn, if you have anything to add to what I've said, we can talk a little more about some of the other components of the gateway.
No, I, I think you did a good job, Gil, of explaining it, and I'm open for questions or clarifications.
Counsel, you have any questions for Gil or Dawn?
I do. Mine is in connection with our Transit Center that we have proposed for that parking area to the right The screen, and I'm just trying to visualize how How you can harmonize the, well, the the utility of of a transit Center. My, my, my thought was having buses coming in on the beachfront or The the front street side as well as Into the parking area and utilizing both sides of that, having that that walkway in the middle Idea. I just don't see it working with all those huge banners going along the side of the road and I, I'm just
No, you're, you're exactly right. And that was one of the, you know, the big questions that when Dawn And Gil really first looked at this, then only said that you're That we, we need to take it some, some look at a redesign of not only Front Street, but also the Transit Center.
Okay. You know, just concerned about utility.
And just, you know, how it actually works, how it's going to function. And that is the, that is the nice thing about having a team like Gil and Dawn is they have done this a lot. And so Dawn has worked on a lot of transit centers. And so Dawn has worked on a lot of transit centers. And there were some components that were, that were okay on ours, but, and Dawn, maybe you want to talk about, so this is the, the conceptual redesign. Dawn, you want to walk us through?
Yeah, sure. Can you put it up on the screen there so that we can take a look at it? One of the things that we first want to do is talk about that arrival sequence coming along Front Street and the, the nature of having bus stops on Front itself to the, between K and the mall. The problem there is if you've got buses there, you've got people who are embarking or getting off of buses on a sidewalk and you'll have shelters and all kinds of facilities that make it uncomfortable for people walking and also for people who are waiting and queuing up for buses because they're mixing with all those pedestrians. A better system is, what we're showing here is to actually create a bus only lane that provides an exclusive access for buses and an exclusive waiting area and area for restroom and ticketing and all kinds of facilities within the existing parking lot. And what this does, it removes a lot of conflict for buses because one of the things that really defers and, and delays a bus traffic is mixing it with auto traffic and pedestrian movements. So by redesigning this, this would create what we'd call a premium system that we, that I've done. I've, I've done literally dozens of transit centers across North America. And what we like to do is to, to set them up so that you, you separate these buses from auto traffic. So this is what this does. The other advantage of this is it gives you a little bit more flexibility on how buses are routed through the downtown and also reduces some of the visual sightline issues that the, the gateway at K Street originally had. So we think it's an upgrade in terms of creating that premium system. And the other sort of subtle component of this is that it takes people who are riding the buses a block or two closer to the downtown core on, on, on Third and Eighth Streets so that they're closer to those existing uses without taking them too far away from the park. Because as, as Gil mentioned, there's going to be a north-south pedestrian connection across to Play Street and then down to the, the Cultural Center and all the amenities. So that's all linked into that all in one place.
And we have, we have had multiple conversations with Joe Rye and RCTA and their consultant firm that they work with, which is Green Dock Transportation, about this, about the, the turning movements and if this could even work because it is such a vital piece of this whole concept.
Yeah. So, so some of the other things that we want to make sure that we have is that we've got handicap access through this redesigned parking lot through and across to the library and other destinations and all that's going to be worked out. But I, I think you're, when I look at this, I would say that this is just a win-win for people who are riding the bus.
And then, so your, your parking lot would be redesigned, there would be accessible alleyways through this, accessible pathways for all these people that are, that are parking there and then could cross and enter into that area.
Yeah. And, and there's some little refinements so that we maintain the EV charging stations as they are and the, and the transformers that go along with that. But I, the, the key is to really make sure that we maintain that parking facility as well because it's probably your best parking lot right now in the downtown in terms of shared use. So in the daytime, you get a lot of businesses use it. And then when you have an event, this is a great place for overflow parking into for a, an event in the, the park, for example. And so the key is really linking these to those two uses in a meaningful way and maximize the amount of parking that we have within that area. So that means designing it so it's what we'd call would be Parker friendly. So people intuitively know how to come in and out of it. And, and it also contributes to the greenery, this green entrance that you have. So this gives us an opportunity to add additional landscaping. We know that in the past you had a lot of trees and things like, or heaving the roadways and other things like that. This gives you a chance to actually get better landscaping that softens that area. So if you look from, from the, the angle parking on the south all the way to the mall, that's about 600 feet of pavement. And so if you don't get good landscaping in there, it's pretty harsh and sort of hostile environment that you're passing through as you go to this wonderful new park that you have. You really want to think about this as part of that arrival sequence of green. And so this is, the landscaping is as important here as it is on the, the roadway or in the park.
And the restroom here is shown. I think the restroom is another great tool that it, it, it's probably ideally going to move north. I think the restroom is a great tool for drawing people across from the park into downtown. You know, it's also going to be a ticket counter for the bus service. So I think the restroom where it's shown, the, the little yellow box there is probably also going to move around a little bit.
The other component that we talked about previously, that's another, I think, key component that we want to keep is the ability for charter buses to use this space as well. And so we did talk about that and they can also be able to utilize this space here. And so people are finding that, you know, their trip destination at the Redwood Discovery Center, at the Colts Center would be a very accessible walk now with the improvements of the Colts Center. One, one street crossing and then you can get on the bus. So it's a very pedestrian friendly from that aspect.
One more question. The, I thought that in the Transit Center plan, we had specifically included a place for ticketing as well as, well, just basically to have a person there for security purposes as well as ticketing. And then where, where's, where's that on here?
That's going to be this restroom. Basically, it's a dual facility. So it's a, it's a restroom for the public, it's a ticketing station. And then also, and Dawn has talked to them quite a bit, a comfort station for the drivers as they need to take a break or whatnot. They can, they can utilize that facility.
That yellow box.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be an all-in-one. And it'll also, as, you know, as it's early enough in this vision and it's a pretty key structure in this area, it will have a, a architecture and a concept that will also match what we're trying to do with the gateway. So it won't just look like a foreign structure. It'll be something that is at least talked about and, and conducive to the overall design.
Yeah. So as Gil mentioned, that, that little yellow box is, that's for, that's conceptual. So it could be moved to the left, it could be moved to the right. The size of it hasn't been resolved on that. But as a, an element to reinforce this idea of a gateway, it, it's a strong architectural element that probably should be redesigned to reflect some, some of the elements that you see in that gateway that Gil designed. And as you can see, it's kind of this triangular building that reflects some of the, the characteristics of your cultural center today. So that you don't have all these divergent elements, but they all create what we'd call a family of elements so that you don't start creating chaos in your downtown, but you start building off of your strengths and repeating those again and again. So it becomes very intuitive as you come into your downtown that there are elements that I can think of and see that provide clues that I'm in downtown and on the, and the park.
One other quick, and we can get into this maybe after, if there are questions, but the, the constructability part of this was another key consideration. And not just constructability, but the O and M, the operations and maintenance of these facilities. I, I think that as we started to pull apart some of the pieces, the ability to build this within budget was a big consideration. And some of our ideas around this of a cast in place concrete with simple elements like wood or Corten steel, it wouldn't necessarily, some parts of it, like maybe the over, the sign overhead would be prefabricated and brought in. But for the most part, this would be built onsite and I think be a lot more affordable. And then long-term, your ability to go in, if there were, you know, pieces, if there were parts of the, of the, of the wood, you know, we can, we can spec the right type of wood that would, would stand that environment. I think that, you know, the ability to get in there and take pieces off and replace them, we thought a lot about that. I think some of these concepts are pretty straightforward and we're thinking a lot about their, our ability to maintain them and construct them.
Go. That is sort of the, the idea. I will, I will say that Dawn and Gil have been great to work with. They are not under contract right now. All of Dawn's ideas and designs are really associated with the downtown master plan, which is still stalled with EDA funding. And so this has really been a component where they believe in, in what we're doing and trying to make sure that, that we think about some of these things and the true potential of, of the different aspects. And I'm bringing it all together in one, one thought process versus a series of, of little pieces, right, coming together over time.
I have a couple of comments. I think a lot of people know that I was one of the big fans in love with the big wave. I still have ideas for making those maybe into some bike racks or something for Beachfront Park, but, so, but I really, really have given this a huge amount of thought because I, I just feel so passionately as what Eric said, we have one shot. And what I did is I did some homework. I went on to the Crandall Arambula website. I've actually started listening to, there's some great podcast series called Fixing Your City. I've looked at the examples all over the nation of what this firm has done. And if I know one thing, it's that I may love something, but I am not the expert. That's why we, you know, we enlist expert opinions. And so I have become a convert. I really hope that our council will support moving forward on this. I, I let go of my ways sadly, but I, I really hear what they are saying about looking at the bigger picture. I really hear and see what they're talking about, about a very monumental, large element at the S curve. I, you know, I really, really appreciated on their website, through all their different, many, many different city improvements they have accomplished. One of their big points is it's not just that they make plans that go on shelves. They make plans that actually turn into realities. And one of their big emphasis is, is on making a more walkable, bikeable, livable city. I can't imagine not being a fan of that in Crescent City. One of my personal goals is to start biking more since, for goodness sakes, I have no excuse and now I will have even less when this gets realized. I also very appreciative of their emphasis as a firm on landscaping, not only for aesthetics, but as mitigating climate change. For a thousand reasons, I put a lot of thought in this and I really, really encourage our council and our whole city to get behind this idea. And so we can start moving forward. New great ideas. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Questions?
I have another. The, the idea of having the gateway be largely wood is, is a little concerning to me. We already have quite a few buildings in the city that we have to maintain on a regular basis with stain and such. And at times we do find it difficult to, to find the funds to get that accomplished. Adding one more big wooden piece to the docket, it just, at this time, I find it difficult to, to do. I, I think that the other cement looking archway, I think, is a little more feasible to me. But again, it's, I'm, I'm looking at the maintenance aspect where we're going to have to keep this up and we're going to have staff members having to do this on a regular basis to, to keep it looking nice. Because we, we don't want, I mean, this is our gateway. We, we, we don't want that to have, you know, fall into disrepair.
Yeah.
So.
Can, can I comment on that a little bit?
Sure.
Because, because I think you're, you're, because I'm, my firm is also an architecture firm. And we work in lots of environments with these sorts of harsh conditions on beach communities and all the way up and through the Northwest and into California. And so we're familiar with this and I think it comes down to how it's constructed and the materials that you choose. I would almost suggest that you, you're not staining. But historically, these sorts of materials, cedar, redwood, age pretty well. And, and Gil has mentioned if they're damaged, she's thinking about ways of replacing things. But the, the issue about wood is really an important one because recently, last April, I spoke at a hosted conference about economic development for the city of Crescent City that you guys are all probably aware of. But one of the things that has become apparent is that two and a half million people go to the Redwood Forest. And when they come to the North Coast, they're not necessarily coming to, for the beach, believe it or not. The, the beach is an important piece of this, especially for the local committee. But there's an expectation for those visitors who are coming from across America and sometimes internationally to see things that they associate with the Redwood Parks and that's wood. And if you're building things in metal and it's colored and painted and doesn't reflect that, you're losing a big opportunity to reinforce this idea that your downtown is the gateway or the starting point for any journey that goes into the Redwood National Park. That is a UNESCO heritage site. And the more you lean into this idea that you are the place to come and visit and market that with wood and wood elements throughout your downtown, the more likely you're going to be economically successful. And that in turn means more tax revenue and maybe more money to, to maintain and keep these things looking fresh and good through the years. That's just something I just wanted to mention.
But that has been a key directive from, you know, staff in the council towards Green Works and Dawn with Crandall Arambula. We have to be able to maintain this. Let's, let's give us something, one, that we can afford to build and two, that we can afford to maintain.
I will mention, we have used the Corten steel extensively in some areas of Redwood National and State Parks. And I can attest that it is very, it, I can understand the concerns about wood, but the Corten seal is almost made for this area. It just gets better looking over time.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, I'm gonna invite a comment this time. Thank you, city manager. Any public comment?
Sam Straight County. I lived in this town for quite a while. In fact, I originally came to Del Norte County when I was two years old. And at one point, when I was two years old and you went down Front Street, there was a lot of stuff down there for you to perhaps walk on the sidewalk and go into different stores and restaurants as you went along the way. Now, when you turn down Front Street, there's nothing other than the Beachfront Park on one side and what, the Surf Hotel on the other side. And when you get all the way to the other end, there's the brewery. So I'm not sure how this particular design is going to lead to any significant number of people walking along the sidewalk to do what? I mean, you've got parking stalls up and down the street on one side that are all separated from the original street. And the only time any of that is being used is when you have some sort of an event. And how often does that happen? I mean, I've driven down that street literally thousands of times over the course of the time that I've lived here. And I very rarely ever see anybody walk along those sidewalks except the Fourth of July or when you have some sort of a, an event. So this focus on walking and biking, I don't know how realistic that is. I mean, we're not an urban city. We don't have a population of 40,000 or 50,000 people that the local 40 or 50,000 people that the local people are going to use that as a place to go walk and bike. I mean, when you get to the overlook of the harbor, granted, there's cars there that park fairly regularly and they do access that sidewalk over there, but don't see anything on Front Street at all. So I'm not quarreling with the design, understand that. I'm quarreling with the potential utility of that design as being some sort of a gateway to the downtown area because Third Street is your downtown area, not Front Street at all. And I don't see people going down the Front Street so they can walk up to Third Street. It's just not realistic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Gitlin.
Hello, Roger Gitlin. I'm the triplicate. I have actually four questions to ask. Hopefully the architects are still online, yes. Um, and in response to Mr. Straight's comment, uh, as I see the sign, it's, should be a magnet. It should attract your eyes. It should pull you off 101 and oh, look at that interesting sign. And you look at it and now the questions I have is the signage illuminated? I didn't see, couldn't see on the pictures if it is, it's a yes number. And is it solar powered if it's illuminated? Cause at night, what can you see on the sign unless it's lit up? That's question number one. Um, what does question number two, uh, have to do, um, with, um, this, the verbiage on the sign? What is the verbiage welcoming Crescent City? And then what's the verbiage on the other side of the sign? Uh, is there any discussion on what that verbiage is going to be? Question number three is have, uh, has the council or the architects considered making the signage actually a pedestrian walkway to get from one side to the other? Which, uh, of course you know how people dart across the street and that's a busy street. Was there any discussion about making the sign wider and making a pedestrian path so people can walk up and on top of it, take a view? And then the fourth question is what is the height clearance? I see the fire chief is here today. I wonder if any of his equipment is going to be compromised by that signage. And from time to time, there are pieces of equipment that traverse Front Street going to the hotel or wherever it's an east west road. What is that verbiage and would that, um, compromise the transporting of any larger equipment for whatever reason? That would not make it under that signage. So those are four questions. If I can have those answered. And if you need me to repeat them, I will. And I appreciate the time, the opportunity to speak with you folks on this. Thank you.
Uh, are we going to respond to that public comment or move on?
Uh, if you wanted to, Mayor, you can, you can take the rest of public comment and then you can direct staff to answer any questions council has.
I believe he was directing it at Gil and Dawn. Are they still on?
We are, we're here.
Do you have any, anything to say about that?
Yes, we, it, number one, the, the signs are illuminated. The, whether or not there's solar powered illumination is to be determined. I think, it, it, it could be done. I think that we have access to, to local power right there. So I mean, having them solar is an option, of course. Um, the verbiage on the sign is to be determined. I think we're talking a lot about what, what that is. I know that there's been, you know, the, some of the feedback with the previous iterations of this, we want to maintain as much of that content as possible. So we've, we've done that. I, that's one of the graphics that Eric wasn't able to show. Um, that we did integrate some of the, um, the Tala messages on the sign as, as previously, um, discussed. So the verbiage and what, um, yeah. Oh, did you get the email, Eric? I think you did probably. So this is, you know, what they say, I think is to be determined. There are iterations of this that show the, the city's, um, uh, seal, you know, there, there are options when it comes to that, what the, what the sign says.
And you show the gooseneck lighting on that as well.
Yeah.
A little overscaled, but that's what they would be.
Uh, right there, you can see them. That's the lighting that would, so I think that from front to your point would be very attractive. I think at night, something like that, it, it has a, um, Santa Monica pier feel to it. You know, it's going to be very, very prominent and I think it'll be iconic.
The point about when you're leaving and coming, I think that's something that needs to be looked at still too as well. What does it say on the backside?
Yep. And on the, the newer iterations, we did etch the concrete on both sides. So they became more of a, uh, a, a complete component. So it did look both ways. Um, when I, the nice thing about modeling these is you can look at them from all sides and all angles. And I think as we start to study these further, I think that will be a natural as to what we do on the backside.
The other issue with the pedestrians is that I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody's thought about getting up on, on, on the sign over the top. That probably is not going to happen, but the pedestrian integration is a big deal. Especially north, south along Play Street into the park. And thinking about this as a gateway into the downtown. So this is sort of, um, a central it or a hub, if you will, of that connection through the downtown into the park. So it's not just completely, uh, Front Street oriented, but it does have a, of, uh, a pedestrian connection.
And then certainly the height is a consideration and, um, you know, this is very conceptual right now. We'll talk a lot about what that ultimate height is and, and, and working with, um, you know, we did talk to RTC about it and, um, you know, RCT, I'm sorry, the, but you know, we did main, make sure that it was, um, high enough to get buses under the buses they have. But, you know, we can certainly talk to other folks about alternate routes or if this is adequate in terms of its height.
You know, what we heard and had the discussions was this is meets the, the clearance requirements.
Yes, and only for the buses, but there's also, we have renters, uh, petroleum, uh, stationed down towards the end, seafront, there, Seaquake gets deliveries. We want to make sure it's conducive for, for all trucks and traffic that come.
And as, as a downtown develops, you're going to have delivery trucks and vans and other things like that, that need to get through here. So that's an essential element of this to make sure that you have the adequate clearance.
The other piece that I'll point out on this particular drawing, which was updated from the previous concept, concepts that I was showing is the fact there, there is going to be some verbiage on the bottom of this sign and we're working with the Tallo Cultural Committee on this. And similar to previous designs. So what this one is showing is to Otten Village. Uh, so that, that same sense of con, you know, uh, concepts and contextual, uh, coordination with the Tallo Interpretive Trail as you come through this, uh, this area. And so that's a, that's a piece that has been added to this drawing, but again, will still be worked and shaped as we work with Tallo Culture.
Thank you. I appreciate the answers. Um, I think the goal this evening is to execute an amendment for the professional services to refine these concepts. So we will be revisiting them, uh, again, and probably will go to public hearing. So all these questions will, uh, you'll be able to ask them again and get, uh, more refined answers.
But yes, this is just the start. I mean, we're, we're short on time. And so that's why I can't thank Gil and Dawn enough to, you know, put in the work that they have so far, uh, on this, but this is the actual contract to authorize payment for their work.
Right. So, uh, what's our deadline?
So, well, this has to be built and in place by June 30th, 2026. And so with a, a concept design like this, we're going to have this in its concept form as part of the Front Street Plan. So we will have foundation locations, or at least somewhat figured out when they build the Front Street portion of it. So that part won't have to be redone. Then the thought is we'll land on a concept design for this overall, uh, for the overall features. And then we put that out for an RFP. So that will need to go out fairly quickly. To fabricate this, we're estimating somewhere between six and nine months. So that's where over the next two months, we really need to have this done. Get a fabricator under contract. That way they can be building this over the winter and then deliver it and install it. Say probably April, May of, uh, of next year to meet our grant deadline of June 2026.
Okay. There's your expected schedule. Uh, any further public comment?
Thank you, councilors, Grant Wersko, Crescent City, but it is Hiuchi too, includes Hiuchi. Well, you know, I hadn't planned on speaking, but I, I am really excited about what you're contemplating doing. And I just wanted to share a different view maybe than earlier speakers. And, uh, I will have to say, I have definite, well, first of all, I'm an avid walker. I'm an avid cyclist. I was stoked when the city did a great job with the bicycle rides Northwest. I actually rode with them to this location. And I have an annual pass at the pool. So I'm swimming a couple of days a week and when I stop my swim, I will walk from there to the post office. And I have to tell you by being in town a couple of days a week, no question you are seeing more cyclists along Pebble Beach Drive. That's a total win. Absolutely. No question about it. And when I do that walk from the pool to the post office, I also see people walking frequently. Now there is an exception. When we have the wind, like we had, you know, what was it about 10 days ago? That really powerful wind, you know, I did that walk and I remember speaking to a woman that maybe a tourist or, you know, I'm not sure, but she was, you know, it's just like, you really had to pull it in to push through it. But in that instance, what's really amazing, the fabulous place to walk then is off along the bay right off of, you know, just the block away from the pool, you know, where everybody's, uh, angle parking in there. So that is a fabulous place to walk and there's great bird watching there too, depending on the tide. So I just wanted to reinforce some earlier introductory comments about people are walking, people are cycling. I'm one of them. And you're, I think you're doing a good job by following that because people are into that. It's for their health and wellbeing and we have an amazing community to see. So write on.
Thank you, Grant. Any further public comment? Bring it back to the council one more time. Anything?
Mayor, we'll just say from a financial standpoint, we do have the budget within our existing economic development budget. Council did appropriate some funds towards future economic development for those. And we haven't used those yet this year. It was going to be for additional efforts possibly with the, with the chamber and on the marketing side of things. From a staff standpoint, from my standpoint, I think, can't think of a better marketing project with long-term impacts than getting these gateways right and thinking about it in a bigger sense of context and something that will last for decades.
Counsel.
Um, I would like to move that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Greenworks BC to include additional refinement to the gateway features on Front Street.
We have a motion. Second.
Sir, please pull the vote.
Council member Dooley?
Yes.
Council member Greeno?
Yes.
Council member Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Alton?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to number 10, appointment of director of recreation and events coordinator. We're going to hear a staff report. City manager, where?
Yes, Mayor Altman, members of the council. So part of what we were talking about was creating more events, more, uh, recreation opportunities, more, uh, economic development, excitement, marketing, all those sorts of things. Uh, and that's exactly what the job description says for this particular position that we are about to hire. Uh, this is not an easy position to fill. Uh, it takes a lot of, uh, takes a lot of commitment, takes a lot of dedication, takes a lot of time, takes a lot of love and love for this community and this particular applicant has that last one in spades. Uh, her dedication is, uh, has not been just over a short period of time. It's been for as long as I've known her, which is probably my, uh, my entire life. Uh, she's been doing things for this community. Uh, the point of honor without a doubt would not be here, in my opinion, without her and her dedication, uh, towards that. Um, she is, uh, she has been a stalwart when it comes to those types of events. Uh, tenacious is another word that comes to mind. Um, she, once she gets a hold of something, she will not let go. Um, and so I think that is a tremendous asset, tremendous attribute and one we're going to need in, in this position as we look to drive things. As we start to, to really build out this park and, uh, and we have our empathy and then we have the waterfront plaza and we have, no, now we have the bike park and we have all these amenities that are going to, uh, kind of create more synergy and more activity for, for people. Uh, the pool is another one. RV park is right there. I mean, these are, these are great things that we have in this community that are right there that most communities would, would kill to have those types of attributes and amenities. We have them. Now it's about maximizing them. It's about putting the frame around them. We don't have to invent them anymore. We just have to make sure that people can use them and that we're thinking about how to use them, that we're marketing. When we, uh, took the pool master plan, we'll out and the consultant came back, the number one thing they said, you need to let people know it's there. People forget about it. Uh, but if we can market it, if we can do things like the, you know, the cardboard boat race, right? That, that Bridget Lacy and Melissa Garcia came up with this year. We can think out of the box that we can look at getting sponsorships and banners. Not only can we start to have people enjoy those amenities more, but we can actually make greater their revenues, uh, with that and offset some of these, uh, things for the city. And as we do that, and then our revenues will grow. But in order to do that, we have to have the staff behind us. And that's really what's before you tonight is to, uh, to approve the contract for this key position. This particular individual is, uh, is no stranger to, uh, to marketing. Um, she has over 20 years of that. That was one of the key attributes that we were looking at. Uh, because this is not only about marketing, but it's also about our social media presence. As the city is moving forward, if we do things and the community doesn't know about it, or if we can't hear what the community is really after or wanting, then we fail as a community. And so this position is going to be key to making sure that that information gets out and the community is informed on everything that we are doing as a city and everything that the community wants us to do as a city. So she's going to be key on, uh, on that aspect of it. Also the support of the pool, uh, support of the RV park, those are also key elements that, uh, that she will be in and, and be a driving factor on. She's also no stranger to your positions. She has held a city council position in the past. She's been mayor of this community. Um, and she, uh, and she still wants to work for us, even having all that, uh, all that experience. And so those are, those are just some of the things that I'm excited about. I'm excited to have this position filled again. I'm excited as we, uh, start to take on things like Forest Moon, to have that kind of a force behind us and, uh, in a driving factor to, uh, to engage. Uh, she volunteered on the Kimome, uh, uh, event this year, working hand in hand with Bridget Lacy and the Kimome Foundation and the High School Japan Club to make that event better than it's ever been, in, in my opinion. Um, I've also had the experience of working with her in the EOC. Uh, when we had the Smith River Fire Complex and our community was without power for five days. More than that, uh, three weeks before we actually had utility power back. Uh, she was a, uh, key component in why the, at least the feedback that I heard from our community, that was viewed as a success. And that's because of that public information, that public outreach to let the community know exactly what was going on. Um, I will say on a firsthand account, she was dedicated to making sure that we got those updates out every four hours to the point that she would not leave my side until we gave her that update. It was constant. Eric, we need the update. It's four o'clock. You are now late on your update. I need to get something out. She's going to be that kind of president. She's going to be that kind of a driver to, uh, to make sure that our community, uh, has some of these things. So with that, that is my report. Action, uh, back to you, Mayor.
Anything from the council?
I, I know the applicant very well. She, uh, she has been a stand-up individual for a long time. She, she's always in it uh, for the community. And, um, I don't think that's going to be an exception with this position. Thank you so much for all of your works throughout the years. Um, and I look forward to having you working with us in the future.
Anything else from the council? Okay. I'll move on to public comment. Anything from the public? Seeing nothing from the public and no further. Seeing nothing from the public and no further council discussion. I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve and adopt a resolution number twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City, appointing Kelly Viola, Director of Recreation and Events Coordinator. And approving an employment agreement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Dooley.
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Tinkler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Altman.
Yes.
Welcome back to the family. Kelly, did you want to say anything? Yell at us or whatever.
Uh, Kelly Shul- Viola, oh my gosh. Um, thank you so much. I'm extremely excited. Um, thank you for all those nice things that you've said. Um, it's true. I have a tremendous love for our community and this city and, um, I hope that my past has shown that. And I just want to continue to do my work here. And as you know, I'm excited to join an already fantastic team. With the city and, uh, I'm so excited to get started. So June ninth is day one and, uh, hopefully we'll just hear great things moving forward. So thank you so much.
Welcome to the family.
Appreciate it.
And city manager, where we do appreciate you being vigilant on filling those vacancies. Good job. Okay, moving on to number 11, we have the military equipment use policy. This is an annual report. That you chief? Martha's gonna do the military.
She's a force to be reckoned with there.
Attorney Rice.
We were, we were kind of hoping there was going to be some demos of some of that equipment. Though we're each going to play a role in this. I just, uh, I'm going to start off by introducing what seems to be often a somewhat confusing topic. Because a few years ago, the California legislature passed a bill, AB forty-one, which requires police departments to obtain approval. From the city council by way of a military equipment use policy. Prior to funding, acquiring or using any military equipment, which is a term of art defined by law. And includes, um, includes, uh, equipment that is standard across police departments and sheriff's departments ac- across the nation. And even includes less than lethal options as well as unmanned vehicles and drones. Um, so each year, under this law, each year, the city council must re-adopt the policy. And you have to do that by ordinance. So this evening we'll be looking at introducing that ordinance. In addition, each year, uh, the police department has to give an annual report for the calendar year previous. Regarding, uh, the use cost and inventory of all the equipment on that list. So, uh, now I'll turn it over to Chief Griffin to give the annual report.
Thank you, city attorney Rice.
Chief.
I'd like to start off by thanking Martha and all her work on this from the start to now, um, getting everything together, the ordinance. It wasn't a small task when we first did it. Uh, it's been a couple of years now since it began, but she continues to do great work on it. So I appreciate it. Um, yeah, so what this does, it basically gives you fifteen categories total that the state mandated. Said if it falls in within these, then you have to, it's declared military equipment. It is not the old ten thirty-three program that was actual military equipment. That you could get on loan basically from the military. It used to be, um, M one grands at one point, then, uh, I think other equipment, M wraps and stuff like that. That would be on loan from the military and then have to be returned later date. That, we don't use that program at all anymore in the Crescent City Police Department. What this does is we have a few categories that we qualify under. Um, we don't qualify yet under category one. There's a lot of paperwork on the drone that we've been trying to get through. And I just simply hasn't had time to go through the stack of paperwork that you have to get before you can even go to that. So that's still a work in progress to see if we go forward. Um, category nine includes those specialized firearms that are determined to be assault weapons under definition. Those would be your AR fifteens, uh, the rifle patrol rifles that we use. Um, that's the only change from last year really that I'm looking at is to add three. So it's not a change. It's just saying the quantity that we're going to possess. We do have four old Colt fifteen, AR fifteens, and then we have the new six new Daniel Defense AR fifteens that we utilize every day on patrol. Um, category twelve is the munitions containing tear gas or, uh, uh, OC. That's the pepper spray type. Stuff that we have. So those include the less lethal munitions that would be shot from. What would be included in category fourteen, which is the forty millimeter launcher, um, that's been with the police department since. I, I don't even know how long it's been before me. Maybe the chief black might know. Do you remember when we got that? Was that? Two thousand and ten. So I, I believe it was a hand me down from Pelican Bay. Um, if I'm correct on that, yeah. So, um, and in my six years as chief police, we haven't used it once, but we do have to maintain it just in case. So that's where that munitions go into play. I can go through the rest of it if we want an update on it. This is. Basically just every year, we're going to have to do this through there. There's no, the report is included, the annual report. Um, there were no complaints on it. We didn't use any of this mo- this equipment in actual, other than training. Next year's report in the calendar year will include one as incident that the equipment was used on duty. Um, but for this last calendar year, it was not used other than training. Um, there may be an uptick in the ammunition that we, um, procure this next year because we do have several new officers that need to go through the rifle program. Um, California requires sixteen hour training. Um, that's in addition to the post academy because it's not taught at the academy yet. There's legislation going through where that can be included. Shotgun training is included. So after the academy is over, we do, we have an in-house training that we can, uh, complete at Pelican Bay. Um, or we go out to like Humboldt and send them there. But that does take a couple of thousand rounds of rifling ammunition to get them trained up to be able to utilize that on patrol. Um, other than that, this is, my goal is to be the most transparent we've ever been. Uh, this policy has been online since day one. Uh, as including our entire policy, you can access it through crescentcity.org. Just go to the police department and it's available there. And as we updated, as I updated, when updates come in, we go through, um, our IT department and they updated on the website immediately. So. If the public has any questions about this, it is all of it from start to finish is online as it will be, uh, for as long as I'm chief. So. There's any questions or if I talk too fast, I apologize. Um, this is basically rinse and repeat from last year, except for the addition, hopefully. A- and the reason for the addition for the rifles is I'm hoping that we get a couple of reserve positions on. And in case we do have an officer involved shooting, which we did have this past year, unfortunately. We lose those, we lose that rifle for several months. So we're looking at seeing if we can bring one back on earlier and have it available, which it should be. That's the purpose of it.
And, um, you're still planning on pursuing getting the, the drone, however.
I'm pursuing, uh, the, it may be a different one. So we may actually have to come back next year to change which one it is because there's different things available with it. And it's just been so long since I first wrote this that I don't even know if that model is available anymore, but.
Thank you, chief. Uh, and it's a little annoying that I have to fill out all this paperwork on an annual basis, but I understand why. These are all common tools used by departments across the country. So thank you so much for the report. Uh, Attorney Rice, thank you so much for your work on this as well. Uh, with that, I move that we receive the military equipment use, uh, receive and file the, uh, report. And wave full reading, read by title only and introduce the ordinance. Number eight fifty-six, an ordinance of the city council for the city of Crescent City confirming approval of the CCPD military equipment use policy.
Second.
Clerk, please pull the vote.
Yep.
Thank you, chief.
Oh, public comment. A public comment.
Councilmember Dooley.
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno.
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Altman.
Yes.
Yeah, I gotta say without a tank or bazooka grenades, kind of this news fest.
I, I was just going to say the term that Mr. Greenow used was a lot softer than I wanted to use, but yeah, I, I'm in full agreement. It's. I understand the purpose of when they put it in, but it is somewhat ridiculous on some aspect. But again. I have no problem being transparent with the public. It's what they deserve and that's what they're going to get. So it's, it's there.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our final new business. Number twelve is a letter of support for legislative efforts to protect the North Fork Smith River. We're going to hear a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. Um, so there's actually a revised letter that has been passed out to the council and we posted online. Uh, and so what's before you tonight is not necessarily a new issue, but it is a new letter or a new topic, I should say. It's not a new topic. It is a new letter. Um, and that is simply about protecting the North Fork of the Smith River, which actually is in Oregon. Um, Smith River is obviously a vital component to our community on many, many different factors. Um, but one of which, which is vitally important for us is the quality of water associated with the Crescent City drinking water. So we, uh, our rainy collector actually taps an underground aquifer, uh, adjacent to the Smith River. And the water quality of the Smith is of utmost importance to us and our community. And with that, and for this request tonight, we do have Grant Werschel with the Smith River Alliance, uh, here, and he can tell you about this latest request. Mr. Werschel.
Thank you, Eric. Counselors, um, was an excellent introduction. What really began in two thousand and fourteen was an application to an agency in Oregon to begin test drilling. Which is a precursor activity to improve, uh, the process for securing, uh, the permits for strip mining. And that really brought our community together. And that was when the city first, uh, commented. Now I see, um, um, our city clerk handed out that handout. There's two handouts that I gave you. One is a kind of a chronology of, uh, what happened. You know, really beginning with two thousand and fourteen, that first date is obviously the nineteen ninety. Uh, Smith River National Recreation Area Act. It's relevant to this issue because it is a mineral withdrawal for all of the land, the Forest Service land in California. But it doesn't address the part in Oregon, which is why Eric made that very clear. Um, that second sheet is just background information about mining in general. Um, and if you would, maybe put those two handouts aside. And what we could do is, uh, with Taylor's help, we could, uh, go through a PowerPoint. Which I will go through quite quickly. And it highlights the important impacts that we have from mining. So what makes this easy is any example issue you would like to bring up. It is potentially impacted by strip mining. It's essentially everything. And you can see there's a, there's a short list right there and then this PowerPoint goes in to those in a little bit more detail. Um, here you can see the type of excavation that you do have, uh, with strip mining. It is the single largest source of toxic pollution in the United States. Uh, this is actually a picture of the Glenbrook Mine, which is here in our bio region. And, uh, we do have laterite deposits in the North Fork Smith. And, uh, so it is a, a similar type of deposit that is there in Riddle, Oregon. Water quality impacts. And you know, what's so very important for me to mention? The city of Crescent City is a really extremely important player. The city happens to be the largest water purveyor in the bio region. Where this aggregation of laterite geologic formations occur. And where the mining proposals have been focused. So though you also have metals contamination. As you would expect. Again, with the Glenbrook Mine, um, where those materials are shipped to, that is another place where you get contamination. And this is what you found here in Cus Bay. System failures. You know, having worked as a consultant in, earlier in my career, you know, there is a tendency to say, hey, we can do this and this and this, and this will mitigate any problems and we, we won't have an issue. And actually mining has proven that isn't correct. There is always a failure of some form. Example, US copper mines, hundred percent of the mines experienced at least one sort of spill or failure. Ninety-two percent failed to control contaminated mine waste. Again, water quality impacts always underestimated. Um, water, loss of water. Well, we might think, you know, um, here where we have the record rainfall, maybe this isn't as much of an issue. Um, but it is another one of them. Impacts to wildlife. Uh, the way they cha- the mines transform the landscape. Examples from around the country are extensive. Back to, uh, Glenbrook Mine, metals pollution. Um, you know, it's a, it's a serious issue there now in terms of cleanup. The mine has not been operating for, uh, more than a decade. Loss of access. Uh, basically what happens when the areas are mined is it, um, restricts access. And, uh, let's just say, as you all know, people in our community, they don't like to see a lockgate. They, access is very important. Air quality impacts. Uh, and some of these things, you know, you have your own examples of from maybe where you lived before or the types of press that we've seen. And again, there were problems and lawsuits with Glenbrook. Very high energy costs associated with the processing. As you would expect, it's, it's not, it's not easy and it's not cheap. And so, um, what we do have is we have an eighteen seventy-two mining law. That really elevates mining as the highest and best use. So in that regard, it does require, uh, engagement by the public and institutions that are involved in serving water and, and, um, doing what they do. So the mi- a mineral withdrawal, as the, um, chronology points out, was, uh, a public process, very extensive, was initiated. Uh, there was, I think, close to thirty thousand comments. Ninety-nine percent of which were in support of a mineral withdrawal. And the way that's done is it's what's called, uh, an aid of legislation. So a temporary mineral withdrawal was put in place. And then, uh, since this is all in Oregon, the two Oregon senators then went ahead and introduced legislation. And they have been reintroducing it each year. And, um, so once that legislation is passed, it can become permanent. The National Recreation Area here in California, that is a permanent mineral withdrawal. Now that does not interfere with a company that might have an existing claim. They still have an existing claim. This is about new claims. So, but the National Recreation Area does not go into Oregon, and so that is why, um, the legislation and the mineral withdrawal. And I might add that there are um, three other rivers and streams with their headwaters with the same type of laterite geologic formation. That would be the headwaters of Hunter Creek, Pistol River. And then just into Josephine County, that's Rough and Ready Creek, and that stream abuts the North Fork. They're all part of that one hundred and one thousand acres that's in that mineral withdrawal. So that's all on the, um, PowerPoint. As our city manager mentioned, there is a, just basically an update letter. That I think the councilors have seen that's in the packet that would just reaffirm, um, the city's continued support for the mineral withdrawal activity. And, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Are, are there any proposed projects right now, uh, for introducing, uh, a new mine in our watershed?
Well, there, you know, this is a good question and there have been a couple of changes. One, you might remember that the company, the last time I was here was Red Flat Nickel Company. Uh, they have been purchased by a Canadian firm, uh, Spruce Ridge Resources. And then they are now part of Homeland Mining. If you were to go to Homeland Mining, and this is in the, I'm not sure if I added this in the chronology or not. But they, uh, basically say, this is very important because this is the only place in the United States. where you have this type of opportunity. And so there are some proposals to specific to your question in the Red Flat area, which is the headwaters of Hunter Creek. The claims, and it's about 2,300 acres in North Fork, that's known as the Cleopatra Mine Area. Again, if I go to Homeland Resources, they talk about the Cleopatra area. They just did some recent reconnaissance out there. But there is no additional proposals. It's just, hey, we're working on it. We're in position and we realize that this could be very important in the future. I would want to say about the laterite geologic formation that we have, it is considered 1.5% nickel ore. That's the percent of the nickel in the ore, 1.5%. The only way presently these mines are profitable is with a generous subsidy. And that is what Glenbrook in our bio region, that was a very heavily subsidized mine. So generally what you have is the mining companies proceeding through the permit process and also lobbying to secure some type of a subsidy. Where a nickel is mined elsewhere in the world, it is closer to 25% nickel ore. 1.5%, 25%. So that gives you a little context and that's the update, but it is kind, you might want to just go homeland mining. And I think I did put that in the chronology if I, I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Any public comment on this item? Thank you, Grant.
Sam Street County. So basically what he's saying is that there's really no fear of any kind of substantial mining in Delnar County. And you're, you're worried about something up in Oregon. I, I fail to see the relevance to this letter with regard to it having any effect whatsoever on the city. So Mr. Werschel has been before the Board of Supervisors on a number of occasions and created quite a stir over there with his claims of water being poisoned in the Smith River. And it never seems to amount to anything. So I'm not sure what the point of the letter is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment?
Thank you, City Council. Darren Short, member of the city, used to be on the city council. I haven't truthfully had a chance to completely look at this item. But I would like to admonish you to take a look at what is being proposed to you today. And I'm bringing that to you because as I sat in your chair back in 2017, Mr. Werschel brought an item similar to this to the city council. And we voted to support clean water, the North Fork Smith River. And it seemed like completely a cut and dried, easy decision to make. But it turned out that what we were supporting, what he was requesting that we support was a designation of the Smith River, North Fork, the Smith River to be designated, and I forget the term now, but basically it would have halted any kind of development that was anywhere in the watershed of the Smith River. I'm not saying that that is that what is presented to you today. Because I don't know what, I, I see that this is an expansion of the NRA, which I am skeptical is the right thing to do. Of course, on the surface, protecting our clean water is absolutely a no brainer. I have my trepidation about moving forward on a letter that is proposed today due to that instance back when I was a city councilman. It seemed like an easy decision. We said absolutely, yes, we want to support this. And we voted for that at a city council meeting in the evening, just like we're doing today. And then first thing in the morning, we were getting phone calls. Hey, what in the world did you guys do? And come to find out, the story wasn't completely what it was purported to be. It would have mandated that there was severe restrictions on any kind of development. You couldn't turn any dirt if this proposal would have gotten through anywhere in the Smith River watershed. Back then, I'm telling the story from, from what I experienced back then, not to what's here today. So I'm asking that you, I'm sorry, my three minutes is up. I'm asking that you take the time to investigate what's being asked of you today and not to approve this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short, for your comment. Any further public comment?
Uh, thank you. I was being very attentive to Mr. Short's comments. I think he's talking about when there was a proposal to designate the North Fork of the Smith in Oregon. North Fork of the Smith in Oregon as an outstanding resource water. Okay? That was the proposal. I'm, I'm trying to remember if the city endorsed that or not. But it was for the North Fork of the Smith in Oregon. Didn't have any relevance to the lower part of the Smith River, other than protecting the water quality it would drain, the water that would drain out of the North Fork. And I just want to say that proposal went through over a year of hearings, multiple hearings. Councilmember Kevin Malu from Elk Valley Rancheria, I think was one of the advisory board members appointed to go through the process through the multiple hearings. And in 2017, the Environmental Quality Commission of Oregon unanimously designated the North Fork Smith in Oregon as an outstanding resource water. And that's the first such designation in the Pacific Northwest. And I mean, in Washington or Oregon. So that was done. But again, it was for the North Fork in Oregon. And I think there has not been any of the stated impacts that Mr. Short has said. I don't really know what he's referring to. It seems rather unfounded, frankly. But it's only for the North Fork is the outstanding resource water designation. And I do know, because I followed that process, what was important to that particular commission was the very outstanding remarkable characteristics of the North Fork. There's no private land. There's no private land up there. There's no grazing. There's no grazing allotments. The roads are not very good. And it's largely because of the type of very poor laterite soils that exist there that could potentially be mined. So that was very persuasive to the commission that here you have this very extraordinary, high-quality river stretch. And it should be protected because it's like a reference in terms of what rivers can be. And from the point of view of the city of Crescent City, it's where your water comes from. So I just want to correct the record and state a few things that I think are relevant to what Mr. Short was speaking to. There are other protections that the state of Oregon, just for Oregon, have done for the North Fork. But that is, I think, the one that Mr. Short is speaking to. Any questions about that? Okay.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Anything else from the council?
I think, I guess I just have some questions about, I mean, there's, there's the issue of, you know, strip mining and the threats that poses by extension to Crescent City, but then there's the issue of federal power and whether the federal government needs to be the entity doing that, or whether we could do more potentially just to do it ourselves. In addition to questions of how that would impact development, as Mr. Short said. So I'm a little skeptical about sending the letter as well. Again, it's not so much the environmental angle. It's just the question as to why we have to just give more power to the federal government, which already exercises so much power here and is kind of zero sum and taking power away from us at the local level. So that's kind of my current question about it, but if anyone wants to discuss that, I'm, I'm happy to listen.
I guess I have the very opposite opinion, which is that I feel like strongly maybe in my whole lifetime, there's been more, no greater threat to some of our resources and than we are facing right now from actually the federal government. And so I would support on our local level, taking that local power and, and using it to our best ability to protect this area. I have lived in West Virginia, Southern West Virginia. I have seen the hundreds of years of waste left behind and know that doesn't increase tourism. And know it doesn't increase or improve your water quality or your quality of life. Excuse me. I also grew up in Reading, very close to the Iron Mountain Complex, Superfund site, left behind for the people of California and our nation to pay for, and it still is creating toxics into the environment. So I very strongly want to protect this area, not just our water. But I wish we, and I hope we will continue to diversify our economy, but the truth is our economy relies heavily on our scenic value here. And I don't see, I don't see tearing up our landscape, even though I feel really bad because I'm kind of sounding like the not in my neighborhood, but you call those the not in my backyard people. But in this case, I gotta say, not in my backyard, this mining. I really strongly feel we should, we should be continuing to support any efforts to protect the North Fork.
Anything else from council?
I, I kind of feel that we need to look at this a little more, I think, before we jump into it. Because there's quite a bit of information here to digest. I think that we should, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, maybe we slow it down a little bit. Can we continue this to another meeting? And give ourselves a little bit of time to look more into the information and formulate our opinions better?
Yeah, I think that's smart.
So as of right now, as, as I am understanding this, Oregon has already protected the headwaters based on our previous support that we've given them over, over the years. This last executive order is telling states to reassess their, is that what I'm getting from, from this sheet that I was given here? It's, it's telling them they need to reassess their public lands. And they could overturn what the state's already done? Doesn't sound quite right to me that that would hold. Could we get?
And as I said, I, I just received this paper today. I'd like to do some more research. This, this wasn't in our packet. So if I would appreciate having more time to look into this.
The 1872 mining law is the kind of preeminent direction. If there is valuable minerals to be mined, that can become priority one. And the question about that I think Counselor Wright brought up, the executive orders that are noted on January 20 and February 3rd is basically where the current administration is wanting to look at rolling back or undoing any mineral withdrawals that had been initiated. So that is true. There is an interest in that. Now they have not, so there's, that's just a statement of interest. And it is true that during the previous Trump administration, that was also initiated in a similar way, not quite as quickly in the administration. But so I think just stepping back and looking at it is a very, very good thing. And what you find is the 1872 mining law is an extremely important and directive piece of, it's a law that provides that mining be the number one. And it was developed at a time when we needed mineral resources in so many different ways. And we wanted to do everything possibly that we could to support that mineral development activity. So that was 1872. So, but that's right. You brought attention to those two things that are on that chronology.
City manager, where, where does the city of Crescent City get their drinking water?
From the main Smith River. So the, the North Fork, Middle Fork and South Fork all feed into the main stem. And then we get our water from underground aquifer directly adjacent to it.
So it's fair to say we're downstream from whatever happens in North Fork?
We are definitely downstream from what happens in North Fork.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
What's changed between 1872 and the current time period is that we no longer have a great deal of mining going on in the entire country. It's been severely restricted in most areas. And in Delnar County, there never was any particular substantial deposits of minerals that were economically available to mine. So when Mr. Werschel talked, started talking about in order to mine in the first place, you have to have a significant subsidy to make it financially feasible. And quite frankly, in Delnar County, I don't know where any of that land exists where mining is an economic reality that any mining company is going to be willing to undertake. And if I'm hearing correctly, it doesn't sound like the Trump administration is going to be too interested in allowing mining to be developed in areas that can't support itself, that it has to be financially feasible. And I mean, I was involved in mining when I first came to this county 30, 35 years ago, and it wasn't feasible then in a lot of respects for copper and zinc and even gold and platinum. At the time, it was a struggle to make it economically feasible. So I don't see what the concern is in the first place that some mining company is going to come in and establish some sort of huge strip mine up on the North Fork of the Smith River. It just isn't practical to begin with. So the latter is not very practical to begin with. Thank you.
And I, and I apologize, I've already taken my time, but I just wanted to
And I apologize, I've already taken my time, but I just wanted to point out in your agenda item, you have letters attached. And in the first letter, at the bottom of the third or second paragraph, it says, "The city has also supported other state of Oregon's measures to protect the North Fork's headwaters." And that is true in that the city council did publish that letter. But if you would go back and see the discussions that came after we approved that letter, the city did not approve what was presented to us. But at that time, it was too late to go back. The city had already given the letter to the Smith River Alliance to take to Oregon. So that's why I'm asking you to just take a pause and see what is actually being asked. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, I'd like to bring it back to the council. We're trying to get a consensus right now. Looks like there's a division of postponing or going forward. Mayor Pro Tim Wright, what is your stance?
I want one more meeting to look at it.
Okay. Well, the majority is to postpone this to a future meeting.
So do you need a motion to continue this to another meeting?
Yeah, what do we need?
Yes, let's take a motion on that.
I move that we postpone, that we, sorry, that we continue item number 12, the letter of support for legislative efforts to protect the North Fork of the Smith River to our next meeting.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
Please pull it out.
Councilmember Dooley?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Wright?
Yes.
And Mayor Altman?
Yes. Okay, moving along. Any reports, concerns, referrals? Do any of the council members have anything they'd like to report out on this evening?
Yes, I have a couple of things I wanted to report, particularly because I was not here last council meeting. One thing I think I would like to report is that in working with the airport authority, this is separate from my city council duties, but I've come in possession through my previous job of some U.S. Fish and Wildlife exhibits about the outstanding bird population on Castle Rock Island in permission with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And after a presentation with the airport authority, I'm going to be moving forward to work on developing exhibits, including for the public, including public binoculars for better observation on the second floor reception room mezzanine, I guess you'd call it, in the airport. I do not plan on using any city funding or airport funding for this. The cost will be over $7,000 probably for the purchase and installation of the public binoculars. Some associated expenses of getting equipment to actually install the exhibits, which are all refabricated and fabricating a third exhibit. But I wanted to be very clear on record that I'm looking at grants and donations for this, and I have the authority's unanimous approval and enthusiasm, I guess I'd say, to move forward on that. So I'm excited about that. I think that'll be a great addition to our airport. I'm a big fan of making our airport even more obvious that when you land in Crescent City, you have landed somewhere special. So that's the first step for that. And the other thing I'm also very excited in talking about just a little bit is that this is also a little bit outside of my duties, but I got really excited when I, because I love baseball. I'm kind of a baseball nerd. And so I happened to stumble upon the fact that Roki Suzuki is the new hot shot. Well, will be hot shot, kind of injured right now, but new rookie pitcher for the Los Angeles Dodgers. And he was nine years old when the 2011 earthquake hit Japan. He lost his father and grandparents. He is a native son of our sister city. When he was only in high school, he pitched 101 mile an hour fastball, which is neither here nor there, but cool. So one of the things I would really like anyone's thoughts and support on is I would really like, and I'm working with others in our community to find ways that we can reach out to Mr. Suzuki, welcome him to our sister city, consider us home, get up here and maybe teach us how to throw some curveballs or something. Including, I'd like to send him a welcoming basket of items from this community. This probably has nothing to do with city council, but I just wanted to share my enthusiasm for baseball and that we have this sister city son right here in California. So let's bring him up to the real California.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything to report out on, but I do want to say I'm looking forward to the Forest Moon Festival on I believe it's Friday, the 31st, 30th. Friday, the 30th, I hope that everybody will come out on Friday evening, afternoon and evening, right? And enjoy celebrating our community and the the part that Star Wars has played in our community's history.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you very much. Okay, any legislative matters this evening? City Attorney Rice?
No additional matters.
Thank you. It's time for the city manager report. City manager weird.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, it's been another busy couple of weeks around the city, as you all know, as we spent several nights together going through the budget. So first, appreciate all of your time and direction as we made it through that. And there will be more to come. So we're looking at probably adoption of that budget second meeting in June. But the other important thing that happened over the last couple of weeks is our coastal development permit for Beachfront Park was approved by the Coastal Commission. And so we have that not only for this first phase that we talked about tonight, but also the amphitheater waterfront plaza, the Kid Town expansion. So it's a big component of that whole project. And we're excited to see that piece behind us. And then we'll just move through the various phases of construction. So this year will be the piece that we talked about with the Colts Center and pieces of the Tallawha Interpretive Trail. And then next year will be the amphitheater waterfront plaza and playground to cap it off. Part of that project was the infusion of multiple additional grants, one of which was the California Coastal Stories Grant, which allowed us to have funding to work with the Tallawha Cultural Committee and produce the videos of the of the Tallawha stories that go along with the Tallawha Interpretive Trail. And so that was the money to pay for the actual filming crew to come up here, filming of the Tallawha elders. And then that'll be available on a web-based platform and also a scavenger hunt. So as people go and they experience this, they'll be able to then go back to our Chamber of Commerce and get a little pin that says they have completed the Tallawha Interpretive Trail and Walk. PBS has now picked up that story. And so PBS flew in today, and they will be doing a documentary of that story. And so that will be a mini documentary of this particular element of Beachfront Park. So it's a pretty amazing component of that. So they'll be interviewing various select members of the Tallawha Cultural Committee, really just about how the project was being made. So another good component on that one. Want to also give out a just a thank you to the Delmar Realtors Association. So over the weekend, they volunteered their time and cleaned up the point of honor, planted new plants. And so definitely a thank you to the Delmar Board of Realtors, as well as Ms. Kelly Fiala, who was down there organizing the whole event. That was a nice little spruce up of that. Forest Moon, definitely pay attention. There'll be more out on Facebook on that, but set your calendars. Friday, May 30th starts at 4:30 in Beachfront Park. And then immediately after there, the downtown Friday night event kicks off. And so that's from 5:30 to 7:30. Number one podcast is going to be there in the park, but we're going to have our standard event with the Rebel Challenge and training all the young Jedis out there, and there'll be prizes and fun and all the rest of that good stuff.
Can we get that post sooner rather than later so we can start sharing it?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, we're still finalizing some of the details as of today, as a matter of fact. So there's a lot of parts and pieces still coming together, but yes, we will get that out for sure. And should be a good time all throughout the night. Chief Griffin and Police Department will be offering popcorn with special bags that I just saw. Let the popcorn be with you with the little police department logo. So should be fun. And then lastly, fireworks. Now, this year, there is going to be increased enforcement on illegal fireworks. We had the tragic event that occurred last year on South Beach. And so there's been several planning meetings with Chief Griffin, Sheriff Scott, members of the Board of Supervisor, Harbor District, City Council. So there will be additional personnel. You'll start to hear ads out on the radio as well. And it's just all about having a safe and family-friendly Fourth of July. So the illegal fireworks are just that. They're illegal. And this year in particular, there will be some increased enforcement. We're going to do a couple of things differently as a city where public works people will be manning some of the barricades that our police department has typically manned as far as traffic control goes to allow them to be just out in the area a little bit more. And again, just making sure we have a safe Fourth of July. The county passed a similar ordinance to what the city has had. And so now there is a finer citation that could go up to, well, that starts out at $1,000 and goes up from there, up to four, I think, depending on the severity and the multiple offenses. That's the report.
Well, thank you very much. I did want to thank Councilmember Dooley for covering on the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Meeting down in Orick. Appreciate that, sir, your dedication to the council. And also want to thank Mayor Pro Tim Wright for covering for me on the next meeting. I will be on vacation. He's in charge. Watch your step. Hey, I'm going to adjourn the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Crescent City on Monday, or the next meeting on Monday, June 2nd at 6:00 PM right here. Thank you, everybody.